I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Supervisor Moore.
Present.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Present.
Councilman Nia Sealy.
Present.
Councilman Pell.
Present.
Councilwoman Stevoni.
Present.
Madam Clerk, do you need to read that statement about the change of the time of the work session?
Oh, okay. Yes, I guess I should.
Members of the town board, change start time of February 15th, 2024 work session. Please be advised that the work session of Thursday, February 15th, 2024, currently noticed for 10:30 a.m., will instead begin at 9:30 a.m. Maria Z. Moore, supervisor, dated February 14th, 2024.
Thank you. I would like to take the items out of order because we have a representative here from Haydock, Stephen Haydock, and he's here right now. So let's do that update on the Hampton Bay sewer treatment before the West Hampton community. Would you like to join us?
Good morning Supervisor Moore. How are you?
Good morning, evening.
I'm Janice Sher, Town Planning and Development Administrator, and I have here Stephen Haydock of Haydock Engineering. He was asked to participate a long time ago with our sewer treatment plan back in a while back. I don't remember this year, but anyway, it's kind of morphed into the general consensus was, hey, we need to really look at this comprehensively on a larger scale, not just at the Cemetery Road parcel, which was the initial idea there. So he is here to report. The first task was a site selection feasibility analysis. And so I'll turn it over to you, Steve. Thank you.
Thanks, Janice.
Thank you for joining us. It's pretty exciting to get to this point.
Thanks for having me. So as Janice indicated, we were retained essentially to hopefully identify a few parcels that might be suitable for citing a sewage treatment plant to service Hampton Bay. There was a process that we followed. I'd like to try to walk you through that process, where we're at right now, what still remains to be done. We believe we're at about the 60% complete mark.
Wait, could you just pause for a minute? What is happening?
I don't know.
We need to stamp the documents as they come in so that they have copy stamps on them rather than, because then everybody thinks they have an original at the end of the day.
I don't have a stamped copy.
Councilmember Nia Sealy needs one. So hand it down and then show.
He confused the other.
We need one back.
Okay, we need one back. Sorry.
That's quite all right. My fault. Didn't understand the process. So ultimately, what we're trying to do is identify a couple of properties that could be used to cite a sewage treatment plant to service the downtown Hampton Bay area. And as I was starting to say, I'd like to walk you through the process to where we are today and what we've done and what still needs, remains to be completed. Up on the board here, we have what is the proposed sewer district boundary. Ultimately, if you were to move forward with a project here, there would be a new sewer district formed to service the, primarily the commercial corridor along Montalk Highway. The bounds are to the east, basically the railroad tracks, just a little bit east of Old Riverhead Road, and to the west is Tiana Creek. And it encompasses primarily, like I said, only the commercial properties along, mostly along the frontage of Montalk Highway. So in order for us to figure out how to cite a sewage treatment plant, we need to get to how big the treatment plant works need to be. And in order to do that, we need the boundary fairly well locked in. And then we need to develop a flow rate. So first, we did the boundary confirmation. We looked at the zoning maps. We worked through this with Janice over the course of the last several months and identified this boundary that's shown up here on the board.
I don't know if people at home, I mean, can see it. This might just be for us. But where is the, does this extend to the diner?
A little bit past the diner.
It's just a little past, like Stop &amp; Shop and all, because that's still like a commercial area. So we're just kind of looking at the land use patterns and then just past King Cullen on the other side.
From the looks of it, it is the area where the train tracks go from south to north over Montalk Highway in the Tiana area. That's that little point on the west side.
Right.
Yep, correct.
Like my talk bus.
Yeah.
So people know that, they know where my talk bus is and they know where Grabber Hill Road is, sort of in Hampton Bay.
So that's the boundary that we're working with. The next step for us was to determine design flow rates. So we used a couple of different methodologies to do that. One of the first steps that we do right off the bat is to try to establish what the existing water consumption is within this area, because water consumption is pretty directly correlated to wastewater discharge at each of these properties. So we pulled the water district water consumption records for the last three years and determined that just all the existing parcels within this boundary generate about 220,000 gallons per day of wastewater, essentially. So then, in order for us to come up with a design flow, we need to look at what we think could happen within this corridor to project how big the treatment works need to be. So we did kind of a range. We did one approach, which was to take that existing water consumption data and then add to it some parcels that we feel might have the opportunity for redevelopment or might be planned right now. So we worked with Janice on this, and she helped us identify some parcels that we know are ripe for redevelopment, essentially.
The main one being downtown, which, as you know, we've tried to lay out, at least a theoretical scenario, so that you would inform this district.
And you're speaking about historical concepts?
Yeah.
That, okay.
But there's a few others, obviously. Go ahead.
Right. So we've got the King Cullen Shopping Center site. We allowed for some additional wet uses to be built on that property and various other parcels that you have seen here. We know that there's a planned expansion at the Heatherwood Development, so we incorporated that. Macy's Lot, just west there.
We're kind of guessing on Macy's. They have said they are going to be, you know, not there in a few years. So obviously, we didn't want to add any residential there. So we said, well, maybe it's like a commercial or recreational, maybe be something for the kids, like some kind of fun thing to do, an indoor something. It's big enough.
It's not good enough to use on that property.
Yeah, but I mean, you have to kind of guess some type of commercial allocation. So you could say, okay, it's the smudge flow. So we're not saying it's going to be that, but we would say, you know, it's going to be something, or it could just be another department store for all we know. But we have to make some projections there that, you know, it's hard to say. But we did not say it was going to be residential in any way, because we're trying to, you know, concentrate any residential walkable homeless center.
So yeah, this is all in anticipation, just trying to develop a sanitary flow rate.
Yes.
That's not to say that this is exactly what's going to happen. We don't know what's actually going to happen. But this at least gives us some comfort in sizing the infrastructure. And this, we felt, would be on the low end. So what, I'm sorry, you have a question?
Yeah, you wouldn't want to go up, I know it's probably difficult, we're going to need to sunrise, but you wouldn't want to go up where the courts are, just in case someday we build a new courts.
Well, if you put the sewage treatment plant up there, you could probably, you would have pipes that you could connect into. And then you would change the boundary to an expansion of the district. But this is the core area that we were planning for.
Just to confirm, we're talking about the King Cullen site, the Heatherwood development, the Macy's Lot, and also the theoretical downtown?
Correct.
Okay, those are the four.
And then everything as it is, you know, today, and expansion under its own current zoning potentially, we may do that.
Right. So we did, on the low end, we figured this targeted approach for known possibilities for redevelopment. And we came up with a design flow of about 350,000 gallons per day. And then we did another methodology, which is to maximize the redevelopment potential based on existing zoning. We look at the floor-to-area ratio for each one of these parcels, and we say, what's the maximum that you could build under existing zoning? And that flow rate was 550,000 gallons per day.
What, I love, you went too fast.
I'm sorry.
What was that, the five, I understand the 350,000 based on these potential redevelopment areas. What was the 550?
That's all the potential redevelopment and everybody existing there maxed out to the maximum extent they could. We never know that they're going to or want to. But if they did, based on floor area, how much they could, you know, I have an existing building. I want to expand it, extend it, whatever. I'm going to do under the current, not changing any zoning. How much flow would that equate to if every single person did that in that whole boundary?
Yeah, essentially, because if you build sewers, there's, they will have the potential, you know, opportunity to do so. They're not limited by the allowable density on the property with a sewage treatment plant.
That goes for apartments and wet stores, restaurants.
Yeah, if restaurants, anything that someone, just as they exist today, wanted to do.
Potential build-out, which is predicated by the private homeowners in the district.
Right, right. Yeah, so you get a range.
So now we have this design flow range of 350,000 to 550,000 gallons per day. Ultimately, a decision will need to be made by the town to determine what size we should use. You know, we're recommending a flow anywhere in that range would be suitable. But there might be some other long-term planning that would come into choosing a correct flow rate for this area.
We don't want to overdense, overdense the property or the area.
Right. So you, but you also want to, you know, exactly. You want to be cautious, but you don't want to go resizing pipes in the future. You know, you don't want, you want to maybe design the plant one way, you know, and make it available later, you know, when we're all not here anymore, 30, 50 years from now?
Resizing?
Or not.
That's reinstalling.
Right. Exactly. But, or you just, you know, but 350 is the low end.
Right, correct. So then the next step for us, after determining potential sizing, is looking at potential sites for the sewage treatment plant. So what we did was we created a rubric, which is what I handed out to all of you. We basically scored every property. We looked at every property within a one-mile radius of this boundary and sought to determine the feasibility for citing a sewage treatment plant against this rubric, which is looking at subjects like parcel ownership, you know, if it's privately owned parcel, publicly owned parcel. It would likely be easier and more feasible to, you know, if the town has property that they already own, to cite a sewage treatment plant on a town-owned property. Subjects like flood protection, distance to the service area, groundwater proximity, these are all considerations in citing a sewage treatment plant. Parcel sizes as critical, setbacks, wetlands, public well proximity, residential proximity. And then where we're at right now is we have scored a number of properties. All these, I'll go back to the other board. All of these yellow targets are properties or potential sewage treatment plant sites that we looked at?
You need to speak on the mic if you can.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's fine. So on the board here, I'm showing all the potential sewage treatment plant sites. There was a total of 12 that we looked at that were potentially viable. And then we scored them based on that rubric, and you'll see that on the exhibit that I handed out. Ultimately, about nine were potentially feasible. And the site that looks to be the most promising is Site A. Thank you. I just pointed to them, but Sites A, B, D, and E. These are parcels that currently aren't owned by the town, but they are sizable. They're located in upland area. There aren't really any residential properties nearby. It's basically just west of the transfer station and Red Creek Park. So that's where we stand right now. The next steps for us.
Before you get into this about your rubric here, a part of it is a weighted scores. Would you describe how it was weighted, how the scores were weighted?
Sure. So out of these different subjects that we included in the rubric, some are weighted a little bit more heavily than others to determine their viability. So for example, if you look on the right-hand side of the scoring matrix, you'll see that flood protection is weighted 500 if the score was five. This is because technically, you could design a treatment plant to be out of a flood zone by elevating it. So comparing that to something like public well proximity, which is weighted more heavily, because there's an environmental concern there.
Okay, I understand. Right. So, and that, something like that would add to the cost if we had to raise it, and so thus the weighting for that particular category.
That is true. So ultimately, this is where we are right now. We've identified these potential treatment plant sites. The next step for us in this study is to complete a groundwater model. We have a subconsultant working for us who's H2M, actually. They're the water district engineer. They're preparing a groundwater model to determine the potential impacts of these potential sites. So everything had to build up to this point, where now we're going to understand what the potential impacts are in this area in terms of water resources, essentially.
And Steve, you mentioned they're not town-owned. Were any of these on the actual site of the waste, you know, transfer station?
Say that again?
Are any of the sites, like I see B, it looks like it's on the property of the transfer station.
That might be a potential site.
Okay.
Yeah, these are all things that we need to continue to evaluate.
I thought you said they were not on the town.
Yeah, that's what, could you clarify? I thought, it sounded like you were saying Sites A, B, D, and E are the most promising and none of which are owned by the town. Is that, did I hear you correctly?
I.
B and C look like they are.
B and C, I believe, are owned by the town of Southampton. A and D are not. But they were the largest in area. So I believe one of the parcels on D was about 36 acres. So for a sewage treatment plant, we need probably at least five to 10 acres. And these properties, B and C are, well, at least B is already partially being used by other purposes. We don't know what other plans are on that property. That piece that looks undeveloped right now might be planned for further expansion on the transfer station. This is information that we need to dig into a little bit further. But these are all potential properties.
Is that core Pine Barrens area, or is that compatible growth?
Compatible growth, although E may be a critical resource area for, so that's another standard, like another layer of, more compatible growth.
Did we exceed the clearing restrictions already there?
In the parcel? We'd have to look at that as well. We're close. Yeah. But the takeaway is the further north does work good.
Significant public benefits.
Is it more costly than, or?
Well, there's, it's like, you know, you have to compare the benefits. And if you're bringing a sewage treatment plant closer to the downtown area, there might be some negative impacts of that, just aesthetics, you know, presentation, having a sewage treatment plant in the middle of your downtown. On the flip side of it, it's further upland from surface waters, which is better for, you know, environmentally.
The land swap option down by, can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so that's something we are looking at. It's a little complicated. I believe it would be quite costly to do so. But one of the things that we are looking at is the potential to swap the water well site, which is at the fire department, right?
Wellfield 1.
Wellfield 1, up to the north, and then put the treatment plant site down there. That site, I believe, is about 10 acres. I believe there would be some costs incurred to rehabilitate the site. And then you're also kind of trading the cost of now you have to bring the water infrastructure that far north, as opposed to the sewer infrastructure that far north. So if, you know, so there's a cost impact with associated by that option.
So a cost benefit of that doesn't necessarily work?
Yeah. And under the current study, we're not doing any cost estimating or cost benefit analysis. It's strictly a planning exercise to determine potential sites for sewage treatment plants and trying to vet them as much as possible of environmental and constructability concerns.
Given that, what's the next step now with those really main four that have been identified?
Thanks.
We have microphones here, too. It's just when you have the map, not at the mic.
No problem. Next step is to complete the groundwater model.
Okay.
Determine what potential impacts are, because when you sewer an entire area like this, you're taking potential sources of water recharge. You know, our wastewater ultimately becomes drinking water at some point. And by consolidating all of this wastewater and then discharging it someplace different than where it is being discharged now, could have impacts on public water supply wells and production rates of those wells. So that's ultimately what we're doing next. And then following that, it would be doing actual technical engineering design. What we did here in the study is we sized a potential sewage treatment plant at very high level based on that potential flow range of 350 to 550,000 gallons a day.
Right.
And that's all the water going in, right? Not necessarily what would be treated? Do you think that there's a big difference, given that there's probably not a lot of irrigation or pools in that area? Would you say that that's true, or?
We accounted for that.
If it's mostly commercial, you did?
Yeah. So when we looked at the water consumption data, we basically take out the irrigation water that's being used to determine what is truly just wastewater. So you basically take out of the analysis the irrigation months from the water consumption data.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
When you, if you have, just say, 200,000 gallons going into the plant, what's coming out?
200,000 gallons a day.
So you don't gain all this?
No.
So does it take more water to keep it clean?
No, I mean, there's things like washdown water, if you need, you know, with a hose for certain pieces of equipment and things like that. But it's insignificant in comparison to the design flow. Pretty much everything that comes in is going out.
But when you come back on your next report, could you just improve the map, because this is going to confuse a lot of people at home.
Sure.
I really, yeah, to Bill's point, if the other map with the locations that were highlighted, I know that this has like the plots on the various locations. But if the other map was actually very helpful, maybe we can kind of hone in on that kind of map and provide a legend, perhaps, of.
But the other map didn't have the possible sites on it.
It didn't? I thought the other one did.
That was just sort of the design rate flow.
Oh, okay.
And this is, okay, where could it go?
So these are the, okay.
Those little target points are like what, where they looked at to score it.
Yeah, I'll just point, you see, there's Exhibit 14. We're producing an entire study that's going to have lots of different maps, and it's going to have everything shown.
That way the camera can pick it up, because, you know, people's going to stop us and ask.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Can you put that up on the website, like do the overlay of it through them and put it up on the website so people can see it? The PDFs, yeah.
That'd be great. And if I could have a copy of that, too, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
How many miles do you estimate that that is from, you know, the downtown to the most northerly location?
It's about a mile.
One mile?
Yeah, that's a one-mile radius from the boundary.
And that was what he was tasked to do, look for all sites that are possible within a mile that are feasible.
I think that's. We started at a half, but that didn't capture the transfer station and further. So then we expanded it to a mile.
Right. And then we expanded the language to specifically include the transfer station. Because that seems to be the place that everyone feels the most comfortable with.
It's fine enough for work. Should be no complaints.
And there's lots of land.
We could possibly build this in such a way that we could pick up residential, like depending on the route of the pipe, if we wanted to do it in the future?
If you have the land.
If we have the land.
If you have the land for the treatment plant.
Uh huh. And we could also possibly, if we have the land, build this so it could scale up to include more of the Hamlet, residential areas in Hamlet, if future boards wanted to do that?
Well, that's where that five, so eventually, well, I don't want to speak for you, but you would create the plant that can handle it up to a certain amount.
Okay, so we go to that? Right. We're addressing what's in that district right now. And, you know, I'm just imagining in 2015, whatever years, there might be a desire for others to hook up to the sewage treatment facility.
We have all that existing density. That would be not new growth. I would say the all those little lots and everybody would, that would be the ideal thing, would be to hook them.
There's a lot of small lots in Hampton Bay.
Yeah.
10 acres.
Is this, is this the same type of treatment plant you're going to put in Riverside?
Oh, it hasn't been designed yet.
Yeah, this hasn't been designed yet. We did the projections on the size of the treatment plant based on sequencing batch reactor technology. SBR plant, which I believe is currently what's planned for Riverside. Technology can change depending on different variables.
And it also, I mean, Riverside took us a long time just to acquire the properties to get that site to the point where it's at now. So I mean, we're still looking at, if it's not a town-owned site, going through that whole acquisition process and.
Yes, that seems to be.
Find a willing buyer and all.
Seller.
Seller.
You would be a buyer.
Yes. So, but the sequencing batch reactor is the easiest to base this all on. And then you can get more fancy.
Yeah, there's other technologies that have a slightly smaller footprint. There's other technologies that are more expensive. SBR, there's, I don't know, probably 50 or 100 of them in Suffolk County. They're very common. They're good technology. They're very widely understood in the operations community. So as far as operating the treatment plant, it's very well-known. It's been around for a long time.
And then the elevation going north, would that require several pumping stations? It's obviously.
I believe maybe one or two, one or two, depending on the topography of Montalk Highway. Because I understand, trying to stay in front of the microphone, but there's a little bit of undulation. There, I believe previously, we had a treatment pumping station cited on Montalk Highway, probably about here somewhere. But the eastern area, the topography dives down. So there's different ways to tackle that. You could either have like a little isolated low-pressure sewer system or a second pump station. But it's probably looking like there might be about two, two to three at most pump stations to get there.
And I can say, you know, I know in West Hampton Beach, they have, it had to go three miles to shoot two pump stations. It seems to be a.
My colleague's point about the map, I see you have the locations indicated by letters on the spreadsheet as well as on the map, too. I think that's what we need in the key, is the letter and the address, you know. So when folks look at it, they see that, you know, we've done our due diligence here, and, you know, we've evaluated a number of properties in a way that they can digest the information, and us, too.
Right. And as Steve mentioned, you're going to get a whole report.
Right.
That explains all this. But in the first step, and we're happy to put the maps and the key and all that online, but it will also be embedded in a document.
Our copy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have all the tax map numbers for every single one of these parcels and their ownership. We have all that information.
Okay, good.
So it's still, he's still finishing that draft. But we wanted to kind of align this conversation, because a lot of people were saying, well, you still haven't figured out the sewage treatment when we talk about, you know, what you want to do downtown. So, you know, that has been going on in the background. So it was a good time to have that conversation so you can see that he's been, him, Steve and H2M have been working on this.
And the report will also include the groundwater modeling?
Yep.
Okay. And forgive me if you already mentioned this, but do you know approximately when we'd be seeing that document?
Probably 30 to 60 days, I'd say.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, the next step is for H2M to do that modeling work.
Right.
We needed to get to this point to understand a flow rate so that they could do the groundwater model, essentially.
Well, at least we know the community is very supportive of this. So that's one hurdle that we've already overcome.
So any other questions?
I'm good.
Thank you for coming to us with this information.
Thank you so much.
Much appreciated.
Get this out there and we'll send you the finalized report.
It's not, it's not our first time through. This district is much bigger than the one that we were talking about last year. And it's also going to be, because of the pump station and the infrastructure that's needed, it's going to, it's going to cost more. So.
Well, it's certainly more comprehensive. And there was criticism that we weren't incorporating the corridor and you need more comprehensive planning there for the whole corridor. So in a way, that's better. You know, we were just sizing a tiny little thing for this little area, but now it is more comprehensive and it makes more sense. So.
I think it's much better to include the larger area. And you've already submitted some, you know, applications or preliminary for the grants, right, for this?
I have.
Does that have to get redone now that the scope is a lot broader?
We, once this is all done, we could file a new engineering report.
Yeah, you'll need to update the costs for the. Yeah, you'll need to update the costs for the other facilities.
And all that stuff has to happen, but it's scored very favorably with EFC and so, yeah. There would be.
That was very proactive. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Janice, could you put us like addresses of those to the board? Can you give the board the addresses of those?
Thank you.
I don't know if we want to put the addresses out there publicly, but.
I like the rubric.
Yeah.
Nice.
So our next topic for discussion is the West Hampton Community Center. I did, just wanna preface the conversation by saying that, you know, we all are very appreciative of what Councilman Boobie did in bringing this to the attention of the board and that there is a need in the West Hampton area for a community center and it's very desired. And that what we're doing is in no way, you know, dismissive of that. We appreciate all that's been done prior to this point. But I know we've all had an opportunity to speak with the youth services director and the senior services director and people from the school. And it does seem like most people would like to have the community center over by the elementary school on the Bauer property, only because it's walking distance for the students and it's easier access and there'd be so much outdoor space. And we did get an opinion from CPF that we would be able to build on that, some of the property that CPF, because it's recreational uses, so we could have the building straddle, the parcels. You know, the town-owned portion of the building could have meeting rooms and kitchen area and food service. And then the CPF portion would be recreational activities and then there'd be plenty of outdoor space. So that's why I think we all feel that it's a desirable location. But of course, you have to weigh that against the existing building that we already own and what will happen with that. And our attorneys have ordered appraisals just to see what the current value is and are looking into, you know, how we would get offers for the purchase. So anyway, with that said, I just, I think we all just need to talk about what we, what we wanna do. I don't know if I accurately conveyed what I think everyone's understanding is, but, you know, let's just talk about where we are because we do have to make a decision with respect to the bids that came in. They, you know, they deserve an answer if we're gonna accept them and move forward or reject them. And it doesn't foreclose the opportunity to rebid if we did wanna go back to that. But that's, that's where we are today.
I think you did a very good job describing it, cause the people of West Hampton, they need a multi-use location. It'll fit the environment better and the location and the people's needs in that area.
I mean, I would, I would say that, you know, I think, I think we should put some kind of timeframe on, you know, getting a buyer for the building and there could become a point when you can't just let it sit there. I think without having a buyer for that building, it's very difficult to build elsewhere. And, but I would, I support rejecting the bids because the first time I saw the plans for that building were at our work session when we went over, you know, the bond information. And there are some issues with the layout that I see that I would like the opportunity to weigh in on that I haven't had to this point. So even if we did end up going with that building, I think there are some ways we could cut costs even there and which would require us to go out to bid again anyway. So, and being that nobody has to stand by the bids they've given us, they're kind of at their discretion as to whether or not they wanna go ahead with the prices they signed up for. So I would like to at least look at it, but I do think we do need to set a time limit on how much time we're going to let this sit and figure out, you know, if it's a viable option.
Right, as it stands now, the bids, the contractors don't have to, you know, honor the bids that they've given because we are past the forty-five day period. You know, for me, it is, I supported this and I still support it. Our numbers have to be in the range of what we currently are. I think we all agree with that, that, you know, that financially the parameters are set and, you know, that's our goal to stay within the parameters of, you know, what we currently have. So I would, and somewhat regretfully, you know, support rejecting the bids, you know, but if it's the right thing for the community, I certainly support it, like I have consistently.
How much time do we have to reject the bids? Is there, is there a specific time limit?
It, they just.
We went past like the forty-five days, which is, it's not a strict like legal requirement, but we do kind of adhere to that. I think the longest we've been at is probably about sixty and we're pushing up, if not past that right now.
It's really, to me, it's not fair to keep the tradespeople on the hook for something that might happen or might not happen. I think it's fair to let them know if it's on our plans to move forward in a timely fashion, then we should kind of let them go and plan other work and.
And currently, we cannot hold them to it because we are past that, so.
So people are comfortable rejecting the bids, that seems like the appropriate thing to do at this point with the timing. And, you know, I don't know, maybe we don't sell it. Maybe we use it for office space or, you know, departments that could set up on the west side of town. But that's, you know, another conversation. I mean, we could either sell it and get the money back for, you know, to pay off the borrowing on that or use it for something else. Depends on what we, how we.
But I think we do need to put ourselves under some type of time constraint on this because it's not fair to the community that we're seeing the end and now we've taken that back and we're not giving them any other.
They've been waiting for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just on that, if we were to, you know, keep, keep the building and, you know, apply some purpose to it, does it make sense that it could, it could function as a community center and then, you know, or, and sort of have sort of a dualistic function where it could serve as a community center, but also serve as government space, department space?
Well, the design that was originally put forward was, there was some reserve, maybe space for ten cubicles on the second floor.
Right.
For employees, like a swing space, not a full out, you know, west end.
Yeah.
It's just hard to have a community center at a space that has no green space.
Yeah.
Well, it was a senior center and office space. And, you know, my only concern is that we have this in place now. And if we reject when we reject the bids, you know, then we're going to be going anew. I don't think we should do the two-site model, if I can put a name on it, you know, let's do one or the other, but not both. You know, and keep within the parameters of the monies that, you know, are allocated for this. And I think we can, and I think we build something beautiful and functional.
Yeah, I think so too. We could tell the engineers, this is what it was gonna cost, nine, eight to nine million. Work within that number to create something beautiful on the Bauer property for the seniors and youth and see what they come up with. And then, you know, and I think, I hear what you're saying, absolutely, we should move forward as quickly as possible. We do have something from our in-house engineer that said this, the current site was gonna be the end of 2025. That was the goal for having it up and running. So I would hope we could do something similar, maybe if we work with modular units on the Bauer property. That would be a good option to move things forward in a quicker way.
Well, the Southampton Ambulance Barn was a modular unit and it is way longer than anticipated. So, I mean, I think we're on to year two on that project and.
What's, what's going on with that?
It's a series of contractor issues, if we will. But it's moving forward now and, yeah, so.
I just question that modulators are not as fast as.
Right, exactly.
There can be issues there too, so.
The general contractor, you know, is doing his best. Have to be careful, you know, cause there were a series of delays, you know, and the subcontractors and the general contractors weren't exactly on the same page over there.
I did speak to engineer downstairs, they will have a rough plan for us in the future, next week.
Oh, that's great. So they're already working on sketching something out for us to look at.
It's probably done.
Yeah.
You can sneak out at tomorrow.
Okay, well, we're just gonna, we have some direction now, that's all we'll do.
Okay.
All right, so now we are going to need to go into executive session to discuss personnel litigation and acquisitions. So we have a motion to do that.
Can we do some, some updates, just real briefly?
Of course.
Just wanna let the board know that in Sag Harbor, the Steinbeck House is having a writer's workshop for students. And they've gone to, you know, great lengths to get students from all of the high schools in Southampton Town. And they are going to be at the site today. Hampton Hopper has donated transportation. They're going to be doing the work, the actual workshop at the library, John Jemaine Memorial Library. We thank them for allowing us to have their space. So it's going to be a great event. And Brett Johnson from the Mitchener Center in the University of Texas is going to be conducting the workshop. So it is working. We have students from Bridgehampton, East Hampton, we included, Eastport, South Manor, Hampton Bay, Riverhead, Sag Harbor, and West Hampton Beach. So that's happening now.
Are they going to the house after the?
They're meeting at the house and they're gonna get the tour of the house and they get to see everything. And then the workshop is gonna start there and then finish over at the library.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have one little thing too. You, I did?
Yeah, yeah, well, a lot of really great work from the volunteers from the Steinbeck House.
The Justice Court of Southampton has reported to me that in the month of January of 2024, two thousand seven hundred and sixty-four people came through the metal detectors at the courthouse and they gave out a hundred and sixty thousand, eight, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars in fines last month in January.
What's your timeframe on that?
On the month of January.
Okay.
They do need a new program.
Yeah, that's something we have to look into.
Yes.
Something Councilman Scavoni has been asking for.
The world knows and we know that those are trailers that were put together in, you know, two thousand and seven. And they had a shelf life then, so.
Yeah, I mean, I remember we had this conversation, it was on the Board of Ed and East Quogue, and we had students in, you know, trailer units for, you know, forty years and actually wasn't having a business offices there, but forty years was well beyond the usage of those trailers, so.
Yes.
Yeah, we've got to think about things like that too.
Yes.
What to do, if we're gonna relocate them. Of course, they asked about the Macy's site.
Yeah, they want the Macy's site.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman, Councilmember Iasili and I went to the, the shelter yesterday.
The animal shelter, yeah.
Yeah, and it was very fun to be around all the animals. And we did hear about needs that they have as well.
Yeah, there is a grant, I believe, in the works of four hundred and fifty thousand that I think will, we will have to actually authorize via resolution so that we can make sure that there are some facility upgrades there. You know, there's some flooring upgrades that are needed. And I just have to say, the volunteers at the shelter are just amazing people. They dedicate their heart and their soul to these animals. And it's just something so admiring to me. Because some of these folks aren't paid a lot of money. The volunteers obviously take a lot of time out of their day to be there. And I do think at some point, this board, we're going to need to look at what we can do to, you know, supply the shelter with whatever we can, additional resources in the future, so that they can continue to do the good work of protecting the animals and making sure that we also raise awareness of adoption, which is a very viable option for people who want a pet because these pets need homes. And, you know, one other thing that we found out from this visit was that the animal shelter offers affordable veterinarian services. So you can go get your, your pet neutered or spayed. If you could, you could try and get other types of veterinary procedures done there at an affordable price. And you can be anybody and you can go inquire about that at the animal shelter. And it's just such a great resource that we have. And I think we need to make sure we do everything we can to support it.
Agreed.
I just wanted to give a shout out to Ryan Murphy because the shelter had been trying for that grant. And the basis for that grant is if you serve multiple municipalities and they were under the assumption, then when they were applying, they were just applying for the town of Southampton. And Ryan stepped in and said, no, no, we have agreements with the villages and other areas and you serve multiple municipalities. And that's what allowed them, with that support from those other municipalities, to qualify for that grant.
And the resolution is on today's agenda, for the grant application.
Yeah.
We have seven villages.
Yeah, so.
East Hampton is one, yeah.
Sometimes working together.
So that's good, I'm glad it helped.
And nicely done to our highway department and public safety for the snow removal in the storm Tuesday. Thank them for their.
Very sloshy snow.
Yes.
It was so heavy.
Yes. The crew did a good work, Charlie and his man, and Mark.
All right, then, did we have a motion to go into?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.